And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. I called to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in the business meeting. What? Anyway, I called to order. And now, Mr. Crepp, will you do the roll call?
Well, good morning, Commissioners from County Council. We are joined here with Mr. Stephen Madcor. And then also, as always, to my left, Mary Rathke, Clerk of the Board. So Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. You all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is we have a presentation, Mr. Crepp.
Yes, we do. This is a presentation of the 2015 Traffic Safety Commission Annual Report. We have Mr. Joe Merrick from our Department of Transportation and Development here to do that presentation for you. So, Joe?
Good morning, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners. My name is Joseph Merrick. I'm the Transportation Safety Program Manager with the Transportation Program of the Department of Transportation and Development, trying to get our new setup right. And I am very excited to have slides up on the screen momentarily. So I'm here today to talk about really our strategic policies in action. There we go. And talk a little bit about our Traffic Safety Commission, our Safe Communities Program, and a little bit about transportation and health. And so I first want to acknowledge many of the people who are supporting this effort, including several of our Traffic Safety Commission members, Bob Carl, Mike Wilson, Steve Fadoli, and Nathan McCarthy. And then Mike Bazner, my supervisor, who has been very gracious in encouraging me to do this great safety work. And then, of course, Patty McMillan, who helps run the Safe Communities Program. If she wasn't helping me, I probably wouldn't be in front of you today. And of course, your support as well. So the agenda I want to talk about is our strategic priorities, a quick 2015 fatal summary, our Traffic Safety Commission Annual Report, some of the work of our Safe Communities Program, which is now called Drive to Zero, and then Transportation and Health. And again, as I mentioned, I want to thank all of you for your support of our traffic safety efforts that we're working on here in the county, as well as health efforts. And it's really without your support that we wouldn't be doing this great work. And the citizens of our county benefit greatly from your support. We're fortunate here in the county to have some really good strategic priorities that all of you have developed. And as an engineer, I'm always out to make things more simple. And so I kind of took those priorities and boiled them down to we all want healthy people, we all want safe roads, and we all want a vibrant economy. And together, those work well together. When one of them's broken, kind of the rest of them break. And so as I've done my work in safety, I'm trying to be much more mindful about the impacts that I have on healthy people in the vibrant economy with the work I do on the roads, to make sure that those efforts are actually supporting those other two. And vice versa, as I work with public health, we're trying to make sure we also support vibrant economy and safe roads. And that's a different way to think about transportation safety. It's really kind of unsiloing what we do, but I think it's really important as we look at the overall wellness of our citizens as we move forward. To recap our preliminary fatals from 2015, in all the roads in Clackamas County, there were 28 fatalities in 2015. That was actually down from 2014, where we had 32 fatalities. So while Oregon and the nation were trending up in fatalities, Clackamas County trended down last year. For the first quarter of this year, we've had 11 fatalities so far, as compared with 15 last year. So we're actually down a little bit so far this year. And so we're hoping that that trend will continue and that we can finish the year out perhaps even a little bit lower than we were last year. Because after all, the plan that we have in place is about getting to zero fatalities. So shifting back to the Traffic Safety Commission, this is one of the groups that's really important in guiding the work of safety and kind of keeping me on the straight and narrow, so that I'm always thinking about safety. We have an 11-member commission, and we're the oldest traffic safety commission in Oregon, formed back in 1980, and we've run continuous over that time. So I think that is really great. I've been fortunate to be part of the group since about 1995. The group focuses on safety education, citizen concern, sounding boards for ideas. Some of the crazy ideas I come up with, I sounded off them before they leave my desk because I have a very well-rounded group with very diverse backgrounds. And so collectively, they bring a tremendous amount of knowledge and important perspective to help guide the work that we do in safety. And of course, they're great champions for our safety action plan. And again, pushing for that goal of a 50% reduction in fatal and serious injury crashes by 2022. And really, we want to be at zero fatalities. We don't want to be sitting in a room and saying, "Well, how many of you want to volunteer to not get home to your family tonight?" Nobody wants that. So each year, the Traffic Safety Commission picks one kind of large project. And this year, we actually have our little safety wheel, that you spin the wheel and answer the safety question and get a prize. And we've used that safety wheel for a number of years, but the questions were developed back in the early 2000s, or early 2000s, and were very out of date. And so the commission took that on this past year to redo all those questions. There was like 30 pages of questions. And so they went through and removed the ones with laws that were no longer valid, added new laws, reshaped the questions, created a variety of questions for kids and adults. And so it was really quite an effort. And so at the end, we got updated questions, we added a few new categories to our safety wheel, and we deployed it last year at the county fair. And I'm confident that the citizens were much happier with the new breed of questions that we had. And it takes a lot of work to do that, a lot of research to go through the laws. And so the group has been very helpful, as well as staffing the many safety events, particularly the Clackamas County Fair, where the Safety Commission covers the fair almost the whole time, has people out there to answer safety questions, and provide that very personal connection with folks that are coming to Safety Street at the county fair. And so one of the actions here today is a request of accepting the 2015 Traffic Safety Commission Annual Report, and can certainly answer any questions that you have about that document.
Commissioner Smith.
I'm referring to one of your slides, Safe Communities Now on the Drive to Zero Campaign. And you list three top risk factors. Number one, roadway departure. And two, aggressive driving. And three, young drivers. So can you define roadway departure?
Sure. Did we want to do the... You want me to go through all the slides first and then do the report? Oh, okay.
Are you going to go through the slides?
You're entertaining questions.
Well, I was thinking of questions about the annual report, but I can go through all the slides.
No, I'll wait for you. I thought you were finished. I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay.
I'll just wait.
Mary and I didn't script this. So let me go through all the slides. So moving forward to our work of our Safe Communities Program, which is now our Drive to Zero Program, we have our top three risk factors, which are roadway departure, aggressive driving, and young drivers. Roadway departure crashes are technically defined as lane departure crashes. So somebody leaves their lane of traffic. So they may run off the road to the right, or they may cross over the center line and be in a head-on crash. So that's that more technical definition of a roadway departure crash. Roadway departure crashes are actually the number one in the county. I think almost 48% of our crashes are roadway departure, predominantly in the rural area. Aggressive driving, following too close, speeding, all those kinds of things that none of us rarely do. And then our young drivers, our ages 15 to 25, our folks that may not have the experience. And then some of the judgment issues that we see as our young drivers learn their way in the world. And there's, of course, other concerns with our Drive to Zero Program that are continuously coming at us. I mean, distracted driving, we're hearing a lot about that in the press, and the consequences of distracted driving type crashes. And then with the legalization of marijuana in Oregon, I think we're all wondering about how's that going to affect crashes, how's that going to affect what happens out on the road. And so we're continually looking to the research that's been done in other states, and trying to deploy measures here that will help us continue on that path of reducing fatalities. And the always continuous challenge is funding, funding our engineering work, our outreach work, helping with that safety culture component with our humans, and then the enforcement piece. And so there's a lot of pieces that make up this work. And it's very exciting, the work that we're doing. As always, it's an area with endless needs. For education outreach with our Drive to Zero Program, Patty leads that effort. She does many, many, many high school presentations, talking with our young folks about driver safety. And we've also bring some speakers in. Kevin Brooks came here last year. He's a Canadian citizen who has a very tragic story of his own. When he was a young man, he was in a car crash with a friend of his. He was impaired. His friend was killed in the crash. He was paralyzed. And so he took that situation, and over the years, has really turned it into a positive. So he does a lot of motivational speaking on safe driving, dealing with stuff of being a young person, even dealing with thoughts of suicide and those kinds of issues. Because sometimes we actually see in suicide stuff, people will behave very recklessly because they have the kind of suicidal tendencies. And so that can play out on the transportation system. Kevin Brooks, last year, reached over 4,000 students at Malala High School, and as well as Estacate and Oregon City High Schools. And he'll actually be back in town May 18th and 19th, speaking at Lake Ridge and Gladstone. And so certainly, if you're interested, we could get you the times of those if you're interested in attending. He's an excellent speaker. Posters and Coasters is another one of our peer-to-peer outreach strategies of having high school kids do safety messages for other high school kids. This is from one of our previous posters, Coasters contests. And we'll take these kids' posters and actually make them into either billboards, or this was a banner that was hanging in the Clackamas Town Center. So we work with the Clackamas Town Center, and they help us with that safety outreach by allowing us to hang these posters in the mall.
What's in the eyeballs there?
In the eyeballs is a vehicle going down the road, down the highway.
I thought it was an angel or something.
No, no, no. Really, some really good artists with these high school students, some really impressive We've also been working on our all-employee driver training, which we're hoping to roll out this summer. And the idea behind that program came from our Safety Culture Work Group, and talking about as we look at safety culture in the whole county, we want to make sure that within the county, we have a good culture of safety, and that our employees are safe and their families are safe. And so the idea of this defensive driver training, to provide that training for employees and a family member. And the defensive driving is important regardless of what mode of transportation you're using, really whether you're driving on the job or not on the job, because everybody uses the transportation system to get here, unless we have people using the aerial transportation system of helicoptering, which I don't think we do. And so people are walking, or riding their bikes to work, or taking the bus, or driving their vehicles. And so those interactions on the transportation system and being able to be safe are extremely important for our own employees. And for risk management, vehicle crashes are our top risk factor when you look at risk management statistics. Another exciting project we've been working on for several years is the Clackamas River Environmental and Ecology Work Group, and that's a partnership with Clackamas County Parks, the Sheriff's Office, the Office of Children, Youth, and Families, and Clackamas River Basin Council. And the idea behind it was really spreading a more family-friendly culture at Barton and Carver. And so we've provided a variety of different positive messaging, using this positive culture framework. We provided a life jacket loner kiosk, which has been really well-used. In fact, when the life jackets were put away for the winter, we had people donate life jackets and hang them there, because they were thinking the life jackets were all gone, which really shows a testament that people in the county really do care. And so that's been a really good project that is continuing and moving forward. We've also, last year, produced three Drive to Zero videos focused on aggressive driving, speeding, and distracted driving. And the premise behind the videos was, "You wouldn't do this in the grocery store. Why are you doing this out on the road?" And they actually won a Telly Award, and we'll be using those as we continue our outreach around Drive to Zero, and trying to put a little lighter side on safety. Safety can be fun. In Malala, we've been working with Malala Communities That Care in an effort to begin to examine how you spread safety culture. How do you help transform a community and create this notion of a safety culture within the community? And so we've been working with Malala Communities That Care and the Rural Development Initiative, which is funded through the Ford Family Foundation, of trying to put together this public-private partnership to really do grassroots-level outreach around safe driving, and build upon the good values of the community around this idea that we all drive on the system, we're all driving in somebody's neighborhood, and we all want to get home safely to our families every night. So this project is... It's really interesting. It's a pilot project, again, to change culture and improve safety. And we're a little bit ahead of the game in the U.S. There's kind of talk about this work, but there's not many agencies doing it. And again, cultivating this positive transportation safety culture with the outcome to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes, because we can't... I can't engineer my way to zero crashes. It takes a lot of folks helping. And the humans are a factor in nearly 100% of our crashes. And so there's a lot of little things that we can do to create this change, to reduce our fatal and serious injury crashes. The last slide I have is just a very interesting slide to me, as I'm learning about transportation and health and the interrelationships, and understanding how work that we do affects health, and how work that health does can affect us. And so as Housing Authority looks at apartment locations, that may drive the need for sidewalks to get to a bus stop, because people may not drive as much in these apartment locations. We have examples from behavioral health of DUI crashes, because somebody treating depression or anxiety, and they're having a couple beers and then driving. Or, as I mentioned, the suicide. We've had suicide on the transportation system. So there's a big behavioral health component with some of these crashes. Things like seniors with poor mobility, not being able to move well in the car, and so they can't turn their head, and so they pull out in front of a car. And so those wellness programs that we have, taking yoga. My mom's a very active walker at 83 years old, so she's out walking all over Oregon City. And then things that we do, we build new safety features at a crosswalk, so pedestrians can now get across the road to get to that food, to get to the grocery store. So we're addressing these concepts of food deserts. And really, at the end of the day, basic things like our curb warning signs make it so that Billy's dad gets home to the family that night. And perhaps one of the even more important parts, as I close out, is all our animals, all our animals in the county say, "Thanks for helping their moms and dads get home to feed them." So that's all I have.
That's probably the most important, huh?
Mr. Ed.
That is my wife's horse. It's Mr. Abel.
It's not Mr. Ed, okay.
No, it's Mr. Abel.
Commissioner Smith.
Well, those of us that have dogs that go home sometimes at lunch to feed them, that's really great. You know, I'm going to ask our Commissioners, is if we can lead by example and volunteer to take the driver training. Maybe we can be the first ones that do it. And John, I know that you think you're a great driver. And I think I'm a great driver too, because gee, I've been doing it for 100 years. But I think that's kind of the attitude that a lot of people have. But I looked at the statistics of Clackamas drivers, and why you're offering it for employees, and the rate is quite high. I was really alarmed by that. And so I think we can try to help awareness in that area, and maybe we can get it on our schedule, that all the Commissioners can go down, wherever it's at, and just...
It's actually online.
Oh, it's online? Well, whatever. I think we should do it. I think we should do it, and just let the rest of the employees know that we did.
We all agree. You should do it.
Hey, I've not had a ticket. Just saying.
Okay, I got one. Lock on wood. All right, Commissioner Bernard.
One thing I heard, there was an accident the other day, flashing yellow turn light. Some people don't quite understand what that means. Got to wait for the cars to come by. You know, I've been involved in these discussions for a little while, and one of the court fees helped pay for this, not this program so much as other programs. But you know, it's... Investment in education's huge. I know AMR does programs at schools for prom night, graduation night. It's probably amazing how many kids die after a prom or after graduating from my school. But I've got a couple personal stories. One recently, a kid up the street from my house, a quarter mile, a day and a half with a car, went down my road, drove through my fence, and the kid in the backseat hit the windshield. And actually, it was not injured that bad. The girlfriend in the passenger seat, the airbag, did more damage to her than anything else. But all of them were all cut up. But a quarter mile from their house, they just picked them up, and they decided to race down the street. Another one is, once my wife was driving the Texas and saw a semi truck come across the freeway, drove right over the top of two cars, and they went to try to help somebody. And then she sat down on the guardrail, and this guy walks up and says, "God told me to do this."
What?
The truck driver, some guy in a car pushed the truck driver off the road, forced him off the road, and he drove across. He was trying to kill himself. And he took out, you know, three other people just trying to do that. You know, and it amazes me that when people try to kill themselves, that they decide that they ought to take out other people. But I think we have some great programs. And when we talk about marijuana, 3% tax, I'm hoping that we can dedicate a portion of that to do what Patty does now in the high schools, to talk about marijuana and how it impairs your driving. If you've ever had an opportunity to put one of those beer glasses on and drive, have you ever done that? They have these beer glasses. Oh, man.
Beer goggles.
Beer goggles, they're amazing. I don't know... I think we tried to do... I forget what we did.
The goggles, through how they work, they mimic how you would see things if you were impaired. So they... I don't know, they somehow must affect the inner ear, so it affects your balance and how you see.
I know, I did it on a golf course. That's what we tried. I never did hit the ball, so I took that thing off. But I mean, you guys do some great work. And one important thing also is that ODOT gives us some money to do these programs. And there was a point that ODOT talked about withdrawing support if Clackamas County didn't do enough, didn't fund it enough. And that's how the court dollars ended up going to your program, and bringing Patty over to do the great work that she does. And she does a heck of a lot of high school work, and does a really great job. So when we talk about the 3% marijuana tax, I'm definitely going to push for a portion of that to go to marijuana education, too.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Savis?
Yeah, I was at the Area Commission on Transportation meeting for Region 1 on Monday night, and we had a number of people in the room, but it's a 31-member group of all the jurisdictions of the metro region. And they made a presentation, or did a presentation, on safety action plans, what ODOT's doing. And they called out Clackamas County specifically as a model to follow, that really impressed with what Clackamas County's done. And so I just wanted to share that, that we have a lot of... We do have a lot of good programs, and do a lot of good work, but it's being noticed. And they're actually trying to emulate that at the state level. So, you know, look for more to come. And I'm just really just pleased to see that we're taking these steps. I think, you know, for some people don't know what impaired is, that's usually under the influence either of a drug, or narcotic, or marijuana, or alcohol. And then distracted, distracted is texting. And I had a friend of mine who got... was hit by a person texting, and just didn't even see him. And she was texting, and, you know, boom, there was an accident. Fortunately, he's still with us, but, you know, he's not as able and fit or will ever recover fully from his injuries. But it's just sad. And even Trimate was saying, they have video of people that are walking on sidewalks and even riding bikes. But I think the video that they were referring to was specifically the texting while walking, and walking right into traffic without even noticing.
That happened at the mall.
So it is not just limited to driving. It's limited to just even moving. So it's just too many people right now with their phones going like this and walking. Anyhow, I just wanted to pass that on, that we're doing a great job and it's being noticed. So keep up the good work, Joe.
Well, thank you. Through you...
And the members of the committee and everyone else that have been part of this. It's really appreciated.
It's actually through your leadership. We are the only county in Oregon with a locally adopted transportation safety action plan, and probably one of a few in the country. So, I mean, thanks to all of you for really pushing us to do this good work.
Well, Joe, thank you. And Traffic Safety Commission as well, great work. Sounds like you show up, too. They even gave your attendance on when you show up at meetings. Thanks for doing that, Joe. You know, this morning, I heard on the radio, Portland has had it with deaths on their roads. And so they have evidently got permission from the state to install more cameras without... This is cameras without a cop nearby, and just simply taking pictures of people. And I thought one of the greatest ways to slow people down, because I've experienced this personally, is to get a ticket. It makes you think twice about it. And what bugs me more than anything else in this county is people running red lights. No, they're not amber, they're red, because mine turned green, and you're in my intersection. And frankly, they hear my horn a lot. So I... Do we have... And we know these aren't cheap, but have we ever thought of doing that to help slow people down and to help pedestrians be safer?
We actually can't use the automated enforcement in the county.
We cannot?
Yeah, so the speed cameras and the red light cameras are only authorized for use in cities. So that's legislative action that would need to occur to allow that to occur in counties.
We can work on that.
Excellent.
The only way to get them in Milwaukee is we have to go to the legislature and have them allow it.
Right. Yeah, because it's a good tool when used properly.
Well, we have some urbanized areas that are far denser than any of the cities around here. So I would think that they should have some re-thoughts about something like that.
We could easily come up with some good locations for some red light cameras.
Yeah, like McLaughlin, especially. All right, I'll entertain a motion, Commissioner.
I move we accept the 2015 Traffic Safety Commission Annual Report.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Savis. Further discussion? All right, Mary.
Commissioner Bernard.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes 4-0. And again, thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Right down to Citizen Communication, and we have an elected official, Sherry Hall, who wants to come forward and give us some important information about the election.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just thought I'd come and share some information as the status of the election today. We're in height of election season. First of all, the ballots are due in the office by 8:00 election night, which is May 17th. It's about just a little less than two weeks away. But everyone should really consider dropping their ballots in drop boxes the closer we get to Election Day, instead of doing it by mail. That's a better way... instead of doing it by mail. That's a better way to do it. And Dropbox sites are listed on our website if you need to know where one is. And for the first time today, the election returns has gone on the website. We mailed out a total of 243,478 ballots. And we now have 6% back, which is 14,248. And we do have the returns broken down by city and special district if there's something special you're following. But voters have until Election Night at 8:00 to update their status of election, whether they've moved or there's some reason they didn't get their ballot. They can update through that time. They can't change their party and they can't register as new voters. But voters already on the books can update and get your ballot. And that's for reasons like change of address. If you've been inactivated because of not voting, you can reactivate and get a ballot. And you can either come into our office or you can do that by phone. We can do it up through Thursday before Election Day. We can mail you a ballot. And today, we have lots of those things happening. So today, we're sending out an additional 800 supplemental ballots for the reasons I just mentioned. And does anybody have any questions? These updates will be posted daily. And each day that you look at it, we'll tell you the time the next day that we'll be updated.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Sherry. Can you talk about the mail delivery system and how that could delay the return of the ballots in time to your location?
Okay, well, first of all, I don't know how many people know, but the postal service has changed the way they do business somewhat. Oregon went from five distribution centers to three, which means that mail from certain locations takes a little longer to get there than to be distributed to the address they're going to. And the post office does nothing anymore on Sunday. And so the Tuesday mail follows Sunday by two days. And sometimes our mail is low on Tuesday. Every election day, all throughout the state, we go to the post offices in our locations and do a sweep. So we go to Oregon City Post Office about 6:00 election night. Anything sitting there that's a ballot, and you can see them because they are colored with white, we take all those ballots back to our office. But just for the sake of the voter, to make sure that their ballot can get there on time, it's really best to do it in drop boxes the last week.
And wasn't the standard changed from two-day business delivery to, what was that, to a four-day?
It's different throughout the state depending on rural and metro areas.
So.
Statute still says that we can mail a ballot to a voter, like as a replacement ballot or one that, you know, they didn't get, up through Thursday before Election Day. But that's pretty close. The statute says we can do it, but for it to get to the voter and be returned by 8:00 election night, that's pretty close. So just because of possible slowness in the mail system, it's really good to drop it at a Dropbox.
Commissioner Bernard?
So a post office mark doesn't really count anymore?
No. It does not count in Oregon. It counts in Washington. It's never been in Oregon.
Oh, really?
No.
I never knew that. I mailed mine the same day I got it, which I appreciate.
Well, as an example, too, I mean, there are voters who will drop it in the post office on Election Day or the day before. And last year, or one of the previous elections in Lake Oswego, we placed a box there because when you're in the metro area and you're driving maybe from Malala to work in Portland, you just have a place where you always stop. But if that jurisdiction doesn't have an election, that Dropbox won't be open, which was the case in Lake Oswego. But the post office there were really thinking. And they had, I think, six or seven ballots that came in on that day. So they took them over to the Lake Oswego Library to drop them and they got to our office on time.
So I love the ballots this time. They were quite different.
It's our new system that you approved, Mr. Bernard. Thank you.
It is quite different.
And it is big. It's eight and a half, excuse me, it's 11 by 17 and it's front and back. There's many areas that have the whole thing. What?
I said, there's a back.
Well, that's another thing. Be sure that you all look at both sides of your ballot. It's much better than having a two-page ballot. And you're right, some people don't look at the back, so they don't vote the back. But if you have two pages, sometimes they don't return one of the pages. So we try to put it all on one.
And finally, I got to ask, so did you have that necklace made custom?
No.
Really?
I was somewhere where these letters were being sold to put on bracelets. And I thought, well, this would work. It's interesting how many candidates have taken this necklace and put it on and had their picture taken. Do you all want your turn?
It'd look so good on me.
That'd be a better for a crown for you.
Does it matter if they vote this time, you guys? Are any of you on the ballot?
Yeah. Yeah, Jim said he mailed it in and voted for me. Commissioner Schrader, or Commissioner Savis, sorry. Wrong. The lights is, uh...
So first of all, what's voter turnout look, I know you had one, you just mentioned 6%. Is that above or below? What do you think turnout is?
I don't have the numbers from a previous election like this. I'll have that for you next week. Or I can send it to you by email today.
I'd like you to come back next week because there's always some things happening. And coincidentally, there's always some things you're blamed for.
Of course.
We have the Damascus dispute, I'll call it. And I understood that you were on a local radio show talking about said dispute.
Which went very well, actually.
That's, the question is.
It was very nice.
Lars Larson.
And I said that at the end. I said, "Thank you for being so nice to me." And he said, "Today only." But it went well.
Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I still wasn't, I wasn't finished there. So getting back to Damascus, I got phone calls about that. Could you just on the air or right now just clarify that those voters will be receiving a ballot?
They've already been mailed out. And you heard that we administratively inactivated certain voters that it wasn't, it hadn't been determined whether they should get Measure 3 on the ballot or not. And the decision came from the state because it is a state measure, but they notified us very late. So in order for those voters not to get the wrong ballot, they were administratively inactivated, which lasted five days, and we did not intend it to last that long. But they have all been reversed, so they're now active. And the ballots went out Monday or Tuesday of this week. And anybody who hasn't gotten a ballot that thinks they should, should call our office. I had about 50-some phone calls from Damascus voters on Monday. But it all went okay. As, you know, after they learned what the situation was, they were all pretty nice about it.
Okay, so for those people that are either out of state or need to mail it, postal mail, what do you think the last day is that you would recommend they mail it to be on time? Five days?
We have always said the Thursday before Election Day. But it's best to be as early as possible. Because we partner with the mail service. You know, they have their process for how they do things. And by law, it says Thursday.
So maybe May 13th?
Mm-hmm. That would be good.
Last day, okay. And then all the drop boxes that get counted by 8:00 are all white and they've got the Clackamas County logo on them, correct?
They do have the Clackamas County logo. The outside boxes are white. There are inside boxes that are silver with the blue label. Some libraries, some city halls. Damascus in particular has it inside the building. But they have someone there till 8:00 on Election Night, so there's no problem getting in.
And those locations are posted on your website?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
And this is not a Dropbox out front of this building?
It is not, but the elections office has a big Dropbox outside the building. It's just a little ways over. Yeah.
You done now?
Yep.
You allow voter watch, I'll call it that.
Observers.
Observers.
Yes, inside our.
How does a person become an observer?
Well, some are organized through the party caucus, is that what you call it, in the county? Yeah, there's, one of the parties organizes them very well. And we know what shifts they're coming in and who they are. But anyone can come in and observe. And during our open hours, it's easy just to come into the front desk and ask to do that. But we do lock the door at 8:00 election night. So if anyone is planning to observe after that time, they need to contact us so that we know they're coming and we can let them in on the side door. So otherwise, if we don't know anything, we'll lock the door and we won't know anybody's out there to observe. And we do want to, you know, allow everyone the opportunity, so just check with us ahead of time.
Okay. Well, I probably won't be over there. Listen, we appreciate you coming in. And like I say, next week, week and each Thursday before the election would be really great.
And next week is the last Thursday.
Exactly.
Yeah, there'll be one after the election day.
The one after, you might as well show up at, too.
Right, I'll let you know how the turnout was.
But no, the vote will not be certified by that time.
Certified 20 days after Election Day. And we actually have a lot to do during that time.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Sherry. Appreciate it. All right, now we'll call forward Dave Adams and Jay Minor.
Here we are again.
Yes, you are.
Let me open by thanking you all again for inviting us to pitch the Stafford Compromise at the policy session on Tuesday. Both Jay and I felt there were a couple of issues that we wanted to follow up on while our conversation was top of mind. For starters, we were both kind of surprised and disappointed that we weren't aware that you guys had received a nasty gram from Herb Coss and the Clackamas, or the Stafford Land Speculators Association. It's, the letter seemed to have sort of informed some of the questions we were asked, in particular Commissioner Savis. Couple of things we want to follow up on. But you sort of implied that there were promises not kept and perhaps bait and switch between our first document, the vision and value statement, and the community vision plan. Jay's going to address that. But I actually wanted to have another bite at a question Chair Ludlow had put out. And I was a little more familiar with the situation than Jay was. And it was around the conversation about what happened in the final weeks, or final week, actually, of the reserve policy session when the recommendations from the policy committee were out and the planning commission's recommendations were out. And it appeared that the majority of county commissioners were on board and comfortable with those recommendations. And in the final week of that process, there was a policy session where everyone was there who'd participated and the maps were all up on the walls. And the map for Stafford was that map, that the section in the north, which we all call the triangle, the recommendations were that it didn't meet criteria for urban and it should be undesignated. And as that meeting came to a close, just before it adjourned, Herb Coss and the lobbyist for his association did what they're want to do, just like your nasty gram. They got angry and they got nasty. And I'm sure the tapes are still out there, so this can be confirmed. And I know there are still people on staff that remember this because I've had conversations with them.
And just to clarify, Dave, that was the previous commission, not this commission?
That's correct.
What year was this, Dave?
Yeah, you know, I think it was 10 or 11. I forget when the, when it was, but...
It was in September to December of 2009 is when the previous commission, I believe Jim Bernard, you were on the commission at the time.
Yeah.
Those are the dates historically that the commission.
The makeup of the commission at the time was Commissioner Bernard, Charlotte Lehan, Lynn Peterson. Those were three electeds, but we also had two appointees, Bob Austin and Ann Lenninger. In any event, there was a tantrum. And it was pointed out to everyone in the room insultingly that the process was a mess, the commissioners were a mess, the pack committee were, had messed up because they had missed the fact that Herb Coss had employment land on Johnson Road. He also threw out at the time that there were two communities in the north section that we're talking about that had potential health risks because septic tanks and wells were at failure. So the whole thing threw the final determination off by a week. It was agreed that they were going to postpone the final determination until they could investigate. The first thing that was determined that the wells and septic tanks was, as Donald Trump would say, a bald-ass lie. But nonetheless, when the maps reappeared, northern Stafford was now an urban reserve candidate. So it's a long-winded answer to your question, what happened in the end? And that is what happened in the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jay?
So the question from Commissioner Savis was about our vision and our value and vision statement and how it corresponded and whether or not it was, I believe, basically in conflict with our Stafford Compromise. In simple terms, our compromise supports urban reserve in the Borland area and anything north of the river be undesignated and the EFU be upzone, which is 1,200 acres from the 80-acre minimum now to 5 to 10-acre farm, farmland. Our vision and our value and vision statement was put together over the winter of 2008 and '09. A lot of hard work with everybody involved at that time. We were just a two-year-old hamlet at that time. I was on the committee and I was also on the board at the time. And basically, the vision, the, excuse me, the compromise plan does not conflict with any of the vision statements that were made in that document that were voted on in March of 2009 with an 87% approval. That's almost exactly the same approval that the compromise plan had in the fall of 2015. I believe it's an 86% approval. The Borland area, it's pointed out that it's the most reasonable area to be developed to, for employment opportunities. It also points out the EFU lands in large parcels, exclusive farm use EFU land and other large parcels currently limited to one house per 80 acres should be permitted to divide into smaller parcels for the purpose of both development and preservation. We are committed to developing these lands in a thoughtful manner that allows economic viability while preserving their value as a resource for agriculture, wildlife habitat, and open space. That's in 2009. That is before the urban rural reserves were decided upon and negotiated. Previously developed neighborhoods, already developed neighborhoods, and we call them out. Halcyon, Mossy Bray, Shadowwood, Toawalt, Loop Johnson, Ashdownwood should not be developed to a greater density. Existing lot sizes have already been established, et cetera. Clustering to preserve open spaces, we point that out. Areas of limited or no development, we point that out, that there is riparian zone, flood plains, and parks in the area that should remain as they are. And the existing infrastructure, including transportation, water, sewer, parks, schools, is not adequate to accommodate a significant increase in density anywhere in the hamlet. That's our vision number one. So our compromise that we put on the table here, that was voted on by the hamlet, that was also directed by the commission. At the time, our value and vision statement was put together. We, there were many of us that politically thought that that's as far as we could get, as far as a community vision plan, that we couldn't get more detailed. The commission, rightfully so, asked us to do more detail and come up with a really community vision plan. And we did that. And that is what we call our Stafford Compromise. So again, I just want to thank Chair Ludlow and the commissioners for allowing us to be part of your policy session. We are disappointed that you're not able to move forward on the question at this point. But Mr. Adams and myself, Chair Ludlow, I think we remember your comment about 18 months ago at one of the town halls. And you came up to Dave and myself and you said, "Well, one thing I can say for two of you," and you used two words, and I've been called a lot of things in my life, but not these two. You said, "You are persistent and consistent."
I remember that, actually.
Yeah. So we go, we go back to the early '90s being persistent and consistent. And again, we believe we brought a compromise that hopefully the three cities and the county can get together and promote over the coming months and years and that possibly in the end, Metro and everyone else will.
Well, you know, kudos for the work, you guys. You are... You are, you are tireless. And I know, having attended a few of your meetings, you guys have worked hard on this for a long period of time. I know it's greatly frustrating, but the process will go on, and sooner or later, something's got, got to happen because the final decision has to be made. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, well, I, I too, because I, I remember feeling like we were one in the same mind in the sense of community being involved and shaping the future. And while you were doing your plan, we were doing ours in McLaughlin area. So, but I, I know I didn't use the words, and if I did, I truly sincerely apologize. I didn't make any reference to bait and switch or conflict. I don't think these were words you gave in my vocabulary that day. So what I, what I wanted, this is the two thousand and nine plan, right?
Right, and the reason that we brought that was so that you can, you can track the consistency between it and what we've just produced.
All I did was ask questions, and the question that I think I recall asking, and maybe, I'm just trying to, and I'll go back and listen to the tape, but I think the question I asked is, what is different about this than the compromise? And so I think that's the closest I got to just really, that was a question, but, and I'm looking through this, I don't have time to study it verbatim, but I think what's, what's different, and you and I had lunch a couple times, at least once, and we've had talks, I've been trying to understand where we were in two thousand and nine and where we are today. And the distinction, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a great opportunity to get, to clear the air, but the thing, what I see now that's different is kind of citing what designations ought to be, whereas in here, there were no sightings of what designations ought to be. Am I, am I missing something?
Well, you can find the same, you will find the exact same references. And, and actually, it's the reason we printed the one piece that you have that's printed, so you wouldn't have to try to sort through that while we were here. But you'll be stunned, actually, when you review the documents, that the, the similarity and, and how consistent we were then, and, and what we continue to advocate for, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm trying to clarify that the.
May, may I?
Yeah, go ahead, Jay.
First of all, I probably, from your question, I, I believe you were, you're absolutely correct. Your questions, as you questioned us about, on the policy session, is, is, is correct. I, you know, people hear different things. And I, what I heard was, you know, if there are conflicts, or are there conflicts between it and what the timing was of when we had the value and vision statement? To answer your, your, your question directly, the, yes, the major difference between the, the final compromise that the hamlet came up with, and the values and vision statement, is we don't call out for any, any urban, rural, or undesignated areas. We, we, we took it at face value. It is what it is now. It's only what it is now. And in general terms, we look to the future. And that's, that's as good as we could get at the, at the point, especially since the urban rural reserve process was going on at the time, and, which, which threw everything, which came as a surprise. The hamlet was formed before Bill Ten Eleven came in. And then suddenly, we're thrown into this process that surprised all of us.
Right. And I just want to just say that, you know, the word compromise, you know, is, it's, I assume, just like you said, that that's a little bit of the change, not bait and switch, and I appreciate you clarifying that, my, my, it was just a question, I meant nothing else by it, but, and, and I'm anxious to, you know, learn, because I wasn't there in two thousand and nine when you were doing this. I was in my neighborhood doing my own plan. But I'd like to, my question again is going back to learning precisely how you saw then what designations might be, because I think you guys mentioned on Tuesday that your plan was submitted prior to the Board of County Commissioners then, which I wasn't there, approving it as all urban reserve. And, and that's the designation piece part of this, that I think your compromise more soundly defines now as the designations, which then it did not. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, because those designations did not exist at the time we produced the first document.
Right, and that's what I'm just, that's simply my sincere effort to try to clarify that.
Perfect, then, everything's clear.
Okay, good.
Commissioner Smith?
Couple of questions. This document you gave us today is, is great. Good information. Now, let me be clear, because I got confused. This map is the map that was developed in two thousand and nine?
Correct.
Okay, with the zoning, just a minute, with the zoning that was in two thousand and nine, is the zoning the same today?
Yes.
Okay, now, next, next question. Thank you. The map that you handed out to us on Tuesday, that's what it could look like if the hamlet compromise was adopted?
It, it's, it's basically this large map here that we handed out.
Right.
At the top, is basically the same map. It has just been updated and, and colorized in different colors.
Okay, all right.
And it's, and the ma, the major difference in, is the metro about sixty acres in the center here, metro open space that they, they purchased since that two thousand and nine, and, and the, and the coloring.
Okay, now, my other questions. Have you been able to formally present this plan to Metro at any of their meetings?
Officially, no. The past Board Chair actually had, Chair and Vice Chair had a personal session with Tom Hughes, but that's incumbent on us now to actually try to get an official sit down.
And what about the cities? Have you been able to present in front of city councils?
Yeah.
Okay, good. You know, I, I like, I've not been shy about saying how much I like this plan. I also said, you know, it could be revised to include some other people's interests, and I believe Herb Cost is going to have an opportunity, right, Mr. Ludlow, to, to bring some things forward? I mean, it's only fair that we listen to.
Absolutely.
Other ideas on this. You know, saying that some, some lands will not be developed, I think is a wonderful, okay, saying that not all lands will be developed is for, could be listed as undesignated, and so, and that is the big conflict going on with Metro. Oh, you can't have anything undesignated, but why not? That's a wonderful safety valve for the future of twenty, twenty-five years down the road if something doesn't work out as what planners think today, which it probably won't work out, to do that. There's just so much to like about this plan. I'm going to read something here that you wrote. I think it's great. The Stafford hamlet was born out of an idea that change is inevitable, including changing the way we develop. And this plan has something for everybody in it, so thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Savis?
One quick question. I don't know who was all there. I didn't attend the October eighth meeting, I think it was October, but when Metro had the hearings on this area in October, November of two thousand and fifteen, just, just, just last year. Would you guys present your plan then?
No, we were in the peanut gallery, though.
Okay. I think it was, it was an opportunity, maybe, to pitch it.
Well, we, we weren't given an official seat at the table. That's why we were in the peanut gallery.
Anyone could talk at that point on the hearing. Anyone could speak. Anyone.
Gentlemen, thank you. Again, appreciate you coming in today to clarify a few things. All right, now, we have Mr. Steve Bates and Les Poole. Either one of you?
I'll yield to the left.
That's, that's a great statement. I'll quote you on that in future.
That was good. I owe him one.
Yeah, Paul, a little slow on the uptake.
Well, somebody. Anybody?
Here we go. All right, I, I think I'm ready. I think I'm ready. I brought some things with me today, and the reason I did so is that, obviously, you can imagine I received some phone calls after last week's meeting. I encourage everyone, and especially those that are viewing on TV now, to go online to the BCC Clackamas and watch what I've said over the last several months. And by all means, there's plenty of minutes and video and archives out there that would refute virtually everything that Mr. Bernard said. And it's not as easy to come up here and speak and get before the commission as, as it may look. And when you're targeted, which is the way I took it, it's troubling. I, I will just clarify a few things about what we heard. First of all, Mr. Bernard started with the history of the light rail line and my involvement. And you bet I was heavily involved. And I became involved when the alignment that had already been studied, millions had been spent, it was all approved. Of course, the alignment ended down at Lake Road, near Mr. Bernard's property. And I, I brought today just one little document. I'll share others. It's the April Fool's Day, April one, two thousand and three, resolution signed by former Mayor Bernard in Milwaukee, authorizing a nine-hundred-million-dollar project. That project ended at Lake Road. The attempt in two thousand and four to, I, I could best term it as illicitly hijack the line and locate the end of the line at Kellogg Lake Park, which now has been named Kronberg Park, was an outrageous act, and Mr. Bernard was involved in it. Saying that the line originally was going to end at Kronberg Park, and that it was a dump, and it was seized for back taxes, is an amazing claim, and I'm sure the Kronbergs who donated the property and designated it as a park, and, and I'm sure they, they would love to hear that. The property that was seized for taxes was a lot next door that's underwater. So the attempt to convert the park into a five-story transit hub that was located outside of an approved LPA and outside of an approved process delayed the implementation and the eventual construction of light rail. When Mrs. Kronberg showed up, had explained that she had donated the property. I'd like you to tell us how we got to that point, and I'd like to tell, I'd like, I'd like you to explain what went on and why you, you voted not, not to pursue Kronberg Park. And eight days, ten days later, there you were, saying, "Oh, oh, well, we need to go to Kronberg Park." The truth is, is after that scam occurred, the idea of dumping the unwanted end of the line at Park Avenue was hatched. And I hope that all of you will go back and look at the LPA report. You can look at the Federal Environmental Impact Statement on the Milwaukee Light Rail Line, and you'll see the land use final order that I spoke about again and again and again. And what did the land use final order say? It said that, as it always was, the line would end at Lake Road near Mr. Bernard's property, an affected property owner who eventually received almost three hundred thousand dollars in compensation after repeatedly claiming that you, that he was uninvolved. Now, I'm just about out of time, but I have one more thing to say. Given the fact that these folks just spent a lot of time up here on something extremely important.
I choose that, I choose that, Les, and I'm telling you something, you can hammer all you want, but I choose, I'm going to finish. I'm going to finish. You can come up here and hammer a commissioner as you wish, and I get to decide time. These gentlemen spent some time with us, and they wanted to re-clarify where they were in official policy session. You didn't. I make the decision. We're already a minute over, and we're cruising beyond that. So again, my decision is wrap it up real soon. Thank you.
I'm there. And given that, what's occurred, if you were in my seat, you'd be asking for ten minutes. Thank you. Last thing I'd like to say is that, while there isn't time to comment about the Gladstone Library, but Mr. Bernard blatantly claims and, and made, implement, a, a comment that I was involved in the tree ordinance, and somehow that was muddied, and now down here at the church property, that's on me. I want it known that I had absolutely no involvement in the formation of the tree ordinance. I was busy working on other things. The two thousand and ten tree ordinance had absolutely no input from Les Poole, so I don't know whether that was made up, or whether someone gave that to you to present last week, but virtually everything you said was nonsense, and I am offended. I don't expect an apology, but I will leave a copy of this one document, and I will be following up. Please don't waste any of our time responding. We need to move on.
Well, I would like to respond a little. It's possible that I was mistaken on the tree ordinance, but I will look it up. The rest of it is absolutely true.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, I was going to ask Mr. Poole if, you know, if what was true and what was not true, and it sounds like Mr. Poole's saying it's not true, but I, I was just a little bit taken back that, getting back to our Clackamas County Core Values document, that, you know, how we treat people, I think, and especially in the absence of the person being, you know, Mr. Poole was not even here when Commissioner Bernard made that, but I just thought that between taking on Commissioner Schrader about document that she signed, and, and, you know, previous charges or allegations that were made, or statements that were made on a, on a website directed towards me, and, and actually two other commissioners on this board, and then that, and, and so, I just thought that that was, I mean, I mean, we just got to have, we just have to behave ethically and look at our, our values and just treat people respectfully. You got disagreements? Have coffee together. Why don't you guys have coffee or have a beer together and work out what that is? But I just, I just was, I just was just stunned, frankly, that so many people were the target of that last week. And I just believe we just got to be as respectful as possible.
Well, I don't know that any ethics were violated. Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Bernard?
Well, I just, I actually just asked Commissioner Schrader, why weren't, I was not informed about the signing of the document, and I don't know how that was a mistreating her. And Les Poole left early. I was planning on talking to him, but, but he left. And he's welcome to dispute all he wants. I mean, let's talk about ethics, Commissioner Savis. When your website lists all the people who support you, have supported you in the past, and I get emails like yesterday from Rosie Stevens, that had a Democratic Party, who says, "Why is my name on your social media site?" When she did not endorse you. You think that's fair and honest?
Well, if I, I.
Not to be disrespectful.
Well, we, I had my staff and myself look, scan my website up and down. I don't see at a time ever that her name was listed as an endorsee, and we even emailed her and tried to call her to find out what, where she saw that. And, and so, I'm, you know, if her name's listed somewhere, by all means, I would, I would remove that, but her name is not listed as a twenty sixteen supporter or a twenty fourteen supporter at any time.
I actually never found it on there either.
So, 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 I mean.
A whole list of.
You know, so, when, when, when I say, you know, when I say with the word ethic, you know, if you look under the word ethical, I think it's really about being truthful, honest, and I think that really frankly, a lot of these core values is about behavior, and it's about respect. I'm not saying it's a violation, but the word ethic has a very basic meaning in the dictionary. Look it up.
Well, thank you.
Well, it's getting into politics, but I will tell you, I had the pleasure, when I was growing up, to meet Governor McCall, and he endorsed me for a little race. So, but I have not put on my website right now, formally endorsed by Governor McCall, because that's the past, and the here and now is just that, the here and now. So, you know, we, this is getting into politics, and we don't want to really do that. So we'll introduce Mr. Steve Bates.
Thank you, Chair Ludlow and commissioners. I'm Steve Bates. I'm here representing the community of Boring and the Vietnam Veterans of America this morning. The Vietnam Veterans of America asked me to serve as an associate member on a memorial committee to honor the memory of the names on the Vietnam Memorial Wall. Seeking to honor our fallen heroes from the Boring area, we found that an exceptional loss had occurred. When we found out that our neighbor, Mr. George Wright, and his family had lost two boys to the Vietnam War, we thought that we needed to stand up and do something. On May twenty-one, nineteen sixty-seven, Mr. George Wright lost his son, his firstborn, and namesake to the Vietnam War, Marine Private George Nathan Wright. That day, the Wright family became a Gold Star family. Two years and ten days later, May thirty-one, nineteen sixty-nine, George Wright lost another son to the Vietnam War, Army Specialist Four James Alfred Wright. On that day, the Wright family became a two-Gold Star family. While there are many two-Gold Star families, there are only forty-one families in the United States that lost two sons to the Vietnam War. Three of them are. in the United States that lost two sons to the Vietnam War. Three of them are here in Oregon, and one is in Boring. With the help of the Vietnam Veterans of America, the Boring Community Planning Organization, the Boring Oregon Foundation, and the 2016 State Legislature, Highway 26 that passes through Boring will be dedicated on May 27 as Fallen Hero Memorial Highway Four, the Wright Brothers. We are asking for your attendance at this ceremony. It'll be at 1:30 in the afternoon at the Good Shepherd Community Church, which is at Haley and Highway 26. We ask for everybody to come and help us honor the sacrifice of the Wright family and to remember the Wright Brothers, for they gave their American dream so that we could live ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bates.
See, he made up for all the extra time people used. Perfect, right? All right. Now we have actual business. We have a public hearing. Mr. Krupp?
Yes, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution that would amend Appendix A fees of the Clackamas County Code, and that would implement septic and onsite wastewater program fees with the Department of Transportation and Development. And we have Deidra Landon and Mr. Dan Johnson with the Department of Transportation here to present you information about this.
Happy to see you tomorrow. Good morning, everybody. Dan Johnson, Assistant Director, Department of Transportation and Development, for Development Review. We've talked for some time with the Board of County Commissioners about our septic and onsite wastewater program, dealing with a number of issues, one of which is the transfer. We transferred them down from Water Environment Services to DTD, which is underway. And second of which is really engaging the board regarding the revenues and fees and how we support that program to make it a successful program. We, unlike a number of the counties in the immediate area, have a great need for septic services. And so we met, I think, with the board, when was the last date? March 20, let's see here?
March, it was on March 22nd.
22nd, March 22nd, we met with the board to discuss the fee proposals under consideration today. I have Deidra Landon joining us with DTD's Administrative Services. And she'll basically run through the nuances of the fee proposal before you today, and we may have to answer any questions you might have. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Dan. So again, my name is Deidra Landon, and I need-
I'll pull that a little closer to you.
I would be happy to. Is that better?
Somewhat.
Somewhat better. Okay. So again, my name is Deidra Landon, and I'm the Administrative Services Manager for the Department of Transportation and Development. Today, the Department of Transportation and Development is requesting that the board adopt a fee schedule to support the administration of the septic and onsite wastewater program within our department. Also today, we have, the resolution will do two things. It will adopt a fee schedule for Transportation and Development, and it will repeal the fee schedule that's currently in place up at Water Environment Services. The adoption of the proposed rates will do a couple of things. The first thing it will do is it's going to help align our fee structure with the Department of Environmental Quality and some other agencies, some of our partner agencies and other agencies throughout the region. One of the reasons we decided to go with the Department of Environmental Quality is because if Clackamas County were at any point in the future to determine not to be the administrator of this septic and onsite wastewater program, that would go back to the state, and they would then administer the program, and the same fees would then apply. The fees that we have proposed for Transportation and Development will provide some necessary resources to hire an additional full-time employee. Our hope is to get some of our soil scientists back out in the field so that we can process through a permit backlog that we currently are facing. So pending any questions that the board may have, it would be staff's recommendation that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the resolution amending Appendix A fees of the Clackamas County Code.
Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to speak just one moment. I believe it was April that we met with the Board of County Commissioners in an issue session regarding the service, amount of services requested, and also the turnaround times for permits through our septic and onsite wastewater program. At that point in time, we shared the nuances of the program, the fact that historically it had been dependent on temporary employees, and the fact that the nuances of that, that model were not sustainable. And we knew that when we assumed responsibilities of departments. So this is part of the nuance, is to get a more steady form of funding to hire more temporary or permanent employer, employee to meet the backlog. I also want to inform the board that through some of the changes that have already been implemented in our septic department, those being reassignment of staff, we've pulled all our septic staff from our lobby services and reallocated them out into the field, also nuances around the fact that we've gone more, gone away from a priority system to more geographic batching system. So if we have folks mobilized out in certain areas, they're dealing with a wide variety of permits in those areas. And last but not least, we have had to hire one temporary employee. They are focused simply on inspections, which has removed a number of those requirements from our current staff. But we are hoping that with this model in future years of reassigning our technical staff out in the field, that we will get a jump on the issue sooner, so the need for temporary employment in the future will be unnecessary. So with that, that's all we have.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. We, one of the reasons we're doing this, Deidra, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the septic system department or division was implanted in West, where the people who are on sewers, paying sewers, were actually subsidizing the cost of the septic system for people who live in the country.
There was a different business model up in Water Environment Services, and the cost of doing business of this program, we do need to increase the fees a little bit to actually cover the total cost once it's transferred out.
And thank you for explaining that. And we've done a lot of work on this topic. And I'm a person who does not like fee increases, but I'm gonna have to vote yes on this, because every program, every user needs to have a program that's sustainable. The, the issues for when you build a home in the country, you need a well, you need a septic system, are much different than hooking up to a sewer at the foot of your driveway into a roadway. It's gonna be more costly. And so I, I agree with it. I'm really happy that we're gonna have a soil scientist in the field, because hopefully that will eliminate the delays, people can get their stuff done faster. And I know that we have had many, many more people wanting to build homes. We've had our permit increases gone up the count, gone up the counter, which is nice. It's a really good thing. And, you know, it all goes to being able to have affordable housing, and the whole housing issue in Clackamas County. Some people may not be happy with the DEQ alignment, but nevertheless, that exists, and we have to really comply with that. And I'm thankful that staff realized this situation and brought it to us. Dan, the addition of the FTE, is that approved in this document, or does that come later?
That will come at a later date.
Like at the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
And, okay. And the additional FTE, will that be covered by the increase in fees?
The modeling that we're showing now is yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, this may sound strange, but I think the fees are a little low. And the reason I think it's a little low, it, you know, people are willing to pay the fee if the service is good. So I've gotten a call from a thousand people, I'm exaggerating, that they had to wait weeks for somebody to come out. And what I always hear, what, like the home builders tell us all the time, they're okay with the fee as long as the service is equal. And right now, what you're saying is you have temporary people, and it's hard to get them out there and get it all done. I think that, I don't mean it's too, way too low. I'm just saying that if you're gonna raise a fee, you ought to give a time. We will inspect your tanks. We'll inspect the work within so many days. And people be more willing to spend, I know somebody told me that it was three weeks. They waited for their inspection, which held up the contractor and cost them money. And I don't know the specifics. I'm sure I could find it if you really want it. But, so, I mean, adding, rounding it up, like, there was one, $221 or something like that, $225, and say, "We'll inspect within seven days, or 20 days, or whatever." People are willing to pay that, you know, a little bit of money more. So I'd like to see, I mean, I'm gonna vote for this, too. But I'd like to see something that says, "We'll inspect your tanks within seven days," or "Your work in seven days." And, and we're gonna have to hire more staff to do that, and so your fees are going up to such and such. So I guess this is a good start. But I'd like to see the, maybe during the budget process, where you say, maybe there's two people, and, or one subcontractor, whatever, and we're gonna raise your rates to such and such, and guarantee a seven-day service, or something like that. You know what I mean?
Can I speak to that just for one second?
Yeah.
There are state statutes regarding review of plans and inspections. We have to perform inspections, I believe it's, within seven days of the applications submitted. And I think the plan review time is 21 days from the data request. What we're doing is having to balance that with a lot of the feasibility test requirements, which don't have a turnaround time requirement. And so what happens is when, when you have a rush of work, as with all the work we do, it's seasonal. It's seasonal in regards to how you do it and when that happens. And so we're hoping these, these fees that we have right now will allow us a chance to hire some additional staff to meet some of that need. But we are hoping, more importantly, that the change in the, in the, in the work scheduling and getting those permit texts away from the counter and out in the field will be enough to meet that. It's also important, and we've had discussions about the fact, that we need to be clear in our communication with folks when we're dealing with them at the front counter. So to do that, we're looking at providing boards and information at that front counter, so it's very clear about, as of this day that you're submitting, our timelines are this. To meet those timeline concerns, one of the things that we do allow is concurrent review. So for example, if somebody has a, has a longer deadline, say four weeks, give or take, that does not limit their ability to come in for a building permit. And so they can have these processes running concurrently. And it's also important for us to message that information as well. But so there are steps that we are taking. We do not have anything in this proposal, or have not considered to date, anything that talks about a, a guaranteed time. We've been approached, for example, with, with folks wanting to pay overtime for folks to go out there and do services. There are pros and cons to that. You know, it obviously gets their permit done a little bit quicker, but it's the nuances of fairness in the permitting process. It's also nuances of, in all honesty, workloads for staff. You know, if we keep their hair seven days a week, you know, burning them out, and the nuances, it's a very technical field. There aren't a lot of folks around to do it. So we're trying to balance all that in that discussion, but we can put some thought to that.
This came, well, certainly this had to be done, a formalization of the transfer of the program over to DTD, and that's great. But the person that had contacted me, and we're all getting contacts like this, said it was way too delayed. And I believe they were in it well over eight weeks. So, you know, tell me again, how many weeks right now if somebody dropped a permit application in, that it would take?
I'm glad you asked that question, because I was prepared for that question. Essentially, there is a point in time, there was a point in time when we were 10 to 11 weeks out from, this is for this, make sure we're clear about what we're talking about. This is the feasibility test. So the feasibility test is key, for example, for new construction, when you're adding a new septic system, which a lot, we have a lot of, a large rural area, so it's, it's near and dear to our hearts. We've, with the changes that we have made to date, meaning adding the additional septic scientists out into the field, and also getting our support staff more at the counter and covering those questions, that is trending down to eight or nine weeks now. We hope that within the next couple of weeks, with the addition of the inspect, additional inspection services from the temporary, that it will continue to trend down into the, you know, six-week, four-to-five, six-week period, give or take. That's not perfect. I mean, and if, and if we have to have a discussion with the board about what their expectation is for that service, we'd be glad to come back and have a discussion with you. It aligns, though, a lot with, in high-peak flows of service delivery, there is like, there is essentially this like seven-week nuance to that discussion, because that's when all those permits kind of culminate, meaning a building permit review, and, and plan submittals going back and forth, and building permits being issued. And so when we, when we really start having a concern is kind of around that seven-to-eight week period. If we're getting past that, then that's when one, one approval, which is needed for a larger project, if it doesn't happen, that's when you start seeing significant delay. But we were willing to approach the staff. It does mean a significant increase, I mean, to meet more of those needs. But we think these needs that we, these changes that we've implemented so far are a big step in the right direction.
Commissioner Savis?
Well, I'll just say that even since I've been here in 2011, this has been, this has been an issue. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but this has been an issue. I understand the peak situations, but also, and we talked about this a few Tuesdays ago, or a couple Tuesdays ago, and we had, shared some ideas about it. But I think it's, it's imperative that when we, you know, in business, that if I miss a deadline, I would, you know, knowing I would miss a deadline, I would call them back and apologize, "I'm not gonna make my deadline." But also, work coming in, when I knew I couldn't make a particular timeline, you know, I was, I would share that with them. I think that communication is really important, that, you know, if we're not gonna make a deadline, or we're gonna tell people, you know, we're X amount of time, that, and you have this workload that's, you know, I'll be able to fulfill that, to let them know. And whether that's charting or something that they're mailed or emailed, I mean, the communication aspect of that, the follow-up. But when they're counting on things, and they're told a couple weeks, and they're told that, you know, we're two weeks out, and it's not forthcoming, they make a lot of investments and a lot of plans accordingly, and it just kind of makes their life tough. So I know we're working on that. I appreciate that. But communication and the customer service part of that, even when you have the delays, please communicate that.
Commissioner Bernard?
I just thought, you know, UPS, you can track your, your package. Might be something to think about in the future, where you can track your permit process. Just log onto the web, give your permit number, and say-
Yeah.
This is, this is when we'll be there, or whatever. I think it'd be good, something to talk about in the future. You mean, I already, I have that?
No, we don't have it yet. But what we do have is you're, they're able to basically go online and track the fact that they, the status of their permit. But what that status does not tell them, for example, it says, you know, this, this has not been approved, and here is what has not been approved on the permit. It has not talked about, you know, two, you're estimated at two more weeks, or you're estimated at three more weeks. And we can take a look at that and see if that's a possibility.
All right. I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. All right. We're gonna close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I move we approve the resolution amending Appendix A fees of the Clackamas County Code to implement the Transportation and Development septic and onsite wastewater program fee schedule.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Thank you, Deidra. Thank you, Dan. All right. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title, please.
Okay. The Consent Agenda for May 5th. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, Approval of a Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon for Primary Care Dental and Chemical Dependency Treatment Services. Approval of a Revenue Agreement with Care Oregon for Dental Health Expansion. Approval of the Housing and Community Development 2016 Annual Action Plan. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, Approval of Amendment Number One to the Local Agency Agreement Number 29996 with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Clackamas County Freight Intelligent Transportation System Project. Approval of a Contract with Fairline Bridge for Construction of the Pudding River Whiskey Hill Road Bridge Project. And under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. And under the Development Agency, Approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract with HDR Engineering for Consulting Services in Engineering Design and Construction Plans for the Boyer Drive Extension Project. And that concludes our consent agenda today.
All right. Commissioners, you want to remove any of these? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of Consent Agenda?
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Bernard, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Bernard?
So is that, is that, I'm sorry, I just turned it off, and you turned it on. The Housing Community Development Action Plan, this is like a second reading, right?
This is the formal adoption.
Yeah, okay.
We had a public hearing two weeks ago.
Right. I was just double-checking on that.
Yes.
Hopefully you're not putting a water pipe under the-
Under Whiskey Hill Bridge? Under Whiskey Hill Bridge? I hope not either. If, if somebody's gonna put, there ain't gonna be us, right? All right, are we ready for the question? Mary?
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, the consent agenda passes four-zero. And now, I know that the audience that watches these have been missing your updates, Mr. Krupp, 'cause you've been gone for a couple of weeks.
Yes, I have. I had a delightful opportunity to watch my son get married down in California. So, uh, we had a great trip on the way down south, uh, and also enjoyed the time coming back up north. But I'm happy to be back here in Oregon and, uh, back in the saddle here in Clackamas County. But I do have a couple of items to share with you. Uh, one, uh, is the, uh, a piece of good news about our housing authority. Um, we have been awarded five additional Veterans Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers. These are known as the VASH vouchers. And these are similar to Section 8 vouchers that provide for five families with rental assistance for as long as is needed. Uh, the county's housing authority is one of the few here in Oregon that consistently is able to reach 100% utilization of its VASH vouchers. And so, uh, our success has led to a gradual expansion of the VASH program here in Clackamas County from 25 to 51 vouchers, and that helps homeless veterans with housing and service assistance throughout the county. So thanks, uh, much to our housing authority staff for the great work they're doing there. And then, once again, I, um, am happy to share with you, uh, news from our always award-winning Tourism and Cultural Affairs Department. And I wanna congratulate the staff who were reached, recently honored with a pair of awards from the annual Oregon Governors Conference on Tourism. Uh, the first involves our 2015 Travel Planner, which was selected as the Outstanding Oregon Visitor Guide. And then, second, uh, our Win Bigfoots Dream Date Campaign. Uh, from last year was recognized with the Outstanding Social Media Program Awards. So I wanna congratulate our tourism staff, uh, for their great work with the marketing and branding of Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. And that's all I have to share with you.
Thank you. That was so short. It is two weeks off. You don't know what's happened, do you? And now it's time for Commissioner, yeah, I'll get out. Commissioner Communication will start with Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we all attended Clackamas Women's Services Leadership Breakfast this week. Uh, and our own Don Trump, Trump. Actually, there is a Don Trump.
I'm sure, uh, yeah, yeah.
Don Krupp, uh, spoke quite eloquently, uh, about the statistics, and they are alarming for domestic violence, uh, related to women and families. And we all work very hard to make sure that center keeps going. We also attended the Parrot Creek Annual Fundraiser uh, for, uh, youth who maybe have gotten a little bit of trouble and we're giving them a second chance to improve their lives and do better. And, uh, just a round of, uh, you know, it was a fundraiser, but there was no auction items. People just so generously held up their hands and they, um, they raised almost $80,000. It was just remarkable. I attended with, uh, Mr. Ludlow, the Regional Disaster Preparedness, uh, Group, uh, this last Friday. It's a region-wide group, and, uh, Montnomah County and the city of Portland, actually, the city of Portland have done some interesting mapping on old brick buildings in their city and, uh, and other things to help us prepare for when we go ahead, uh, uh, to be ready if and when an earthquake happens. And, you know, guys, I was really serious about our driver training thing.
We're trying to ignore you.
I know you're trying to ignore me, yeah. And so I just think we should do that, and maybe Mr. Magcor wants to do it, maybe Mr. Krupp wants to do it, and we, to really encourage our employees to do it.
It's mandatory, by the way.
And that's for employees, which technically we are not.
Well, whatever, I just, you know, it may be mandatory for them, but we need to do it too. I just think so, to make people feel good about being mandatory. Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, and now it's time for, I gotta get my list here. We gotta do this in a particular order. It's time for Commissioner Savas.
Well, uh, I just wanna, just, uh, I was, just recently saw something that kinda spoke to, uh, the attendance of, uh, the board members, and I just wanted to state that I believe Commissioner Schrader is in a committee meeting in Salem, serving, I believe, for the PUC Utility Committee. And, um, I know we all put in a lot of, a lot of hours and a lot of time, and, uh, if we're not here, we're somewhere else. And so I think, uh, I'm not sure what that attendance was. I pride myself in attendance as much as possible, um, and I know we all do as well. Um, he, uh, recently, um, we had a budget committee meeting on April 6th, and I, I know it's been, um, we have quarterly meetings for our budget committee, and they've always been encouraged to ask your questions in, in advance, um, and not bog a meeting down, and I think they've done that. And so I'm hoping that the recent request, um, uh, it's now seen to be going through perhaps a, um, a request to have a meeting to actually approve whether or not we actually submit answers to requests, but I, hopefully, we can get that done as soon as possible so that we don't delay. Um, so one of my requests is that early next week, we, you know, form a meeting, if we have to form a meeting, to okay that budget committee questions are answered. Um, but I think that's a little bit different or a shift from actually what we've told folks repeatedly over the years. But, um, I just wanna make sure that, um, we're being viewed as being transparent and, um, and that we all work together as well as possible. I don't know the nature of all those things, and maybe there's a little bit of confusion on who asked for what, when, and where. But that's important. I, uh, Mary, you were gonna pull up. Uh, I wanna thank staff for putting on the website and the landing page. Basically, this, the contents that's in this document I'm holding up, but it's under Spirit. And the word Spirit, uh, S standing for service, the P standing for professionalism, I for integrity, R for respect, I for individual accountability, and the one that I referenced, and I constantly reference is trust. Um, and, you know, these are really valuable. I mean, I, I really, when you actually read them, it, it really kinda speaks to really a code of conduct that we, uh, ask in our employees. And actually, our employees put this together, so I wanna give them tremendous credit and kudos for that. And I presume whether it's, uh, uh, the driving test or anything, that we all hold ourselves to the same standards. Exactly, thank you, Tudy. Um, so, uh, I attended a meeting last night, uh, with a neighborhood group, uh, related to an issue going on in their neighborhood, and I want to again give a shout-out to the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and the deputies there that are working on closing down some of these, uh, problem houses, which are drug-related. So I met with a group last night in the Jenny's Lodge area that are dealing with that. And I also wanna thank the District Attorney's Office for availing, um, their staff and the Sheriff's Office for availing his staff to tackle these things. And those deputies are doing great work, and we had a good community meeting. And I, they've shut down a number of these houses already. Uh, so I just wanna say it's a, it's a good, it's a good effort. Uh, we're trying to deal with eradicating some of this kinda s- activity that's going on. And, you know, it's the taxpayers getting their money's worth. And, um, so I want, again, that shout-out to them and, uh, looking forward to, uh, um, another productive week. Thank you.
Just as a note, that, uh, Spirit, I think that's been out for a year, hasn't it?
Yes, uh, it's been developed for a year. We have not placed a, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's, it's, it's been, uh, published for a year. It's not been, uh, displayed in, uh, as a, uh, badge on our splash page. Uh, and I, I talked about this with Mr., uh, Mr. Schmidt, uh, earlier this week, uh, 'cause I myself sometimes have trouble finding it on the county's website when I've been looking for it. So I said, "Let's get it on the splash page so it's available for folks to use." Yes.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Bernard?
Uh, and I, so, I believe John mentioned this last week. Chair Ludlow and I went to a child abuse education program, and I tell you, that stuff is just so heartbreaking. It's, it, it, um, it was very challenging to, uh, go through that program, but it makes you so aware, um, of what's going on out there, and, and it, it, it's just amazing. You know, uh, Paul, you mentioned, uh, what the sheriff's doing and the DA about these houses, which are abandoned, basically, and somebody's taken them over.
Some of them, yeah.
Some of them. You know, uh, the sad part is we're not doing it with illegal marijuana sites. Uh, you know, we have one particular one out in the Damascus Boring area that is, uh, illegal. Uh, and neighbors are frankly worried and frightened, uh, that, that we're not taking care of this. And frankly, we gotta do something about this, and we sh- if we're gonna have rules and regulations and laws and codes, we sure should be enforcing them. And this particular one, I doubt, you know, most marijuana, legal marijuana facilities, there, there are always some bad apples, and this is one of them. And frankly, I think we should, uh, do whatever we can to, uh, shut this place down, um, as soon as possible, and, uh, we should get the sheriff together and everybody else and shut this place down. It, it would've been so simple had these folks done things just slightly different, but they didn't. Uh, Clackamas Women's Services, uh, I mean, Business Leadership, which, uh, Don Trump...
Donald.
Donald Krupp. Uh, spoke at it along with others. One in four women are involved in domestic violence. I was a little shocked, a little bit shocked about that. Wow, that's, that's an incredible problem. Parrot Creek, um, is a, a youth facility that, uh, we own the land, and I'm hoping, uh, at some point, we've been negotiating a contract on this thing for maintenance as long as I've been here. Um, I don't know, at some point, I think we oughta go out for some sort of, uh, bond or something to fix this facility up and give it to them. I think it's, uh, this has been around, how many years? Does anyone remember? Sixties?
Late sixties.
Late sixties it was created and, and actually had its own tax base at one point, I believe. Uh, but, uh, that's about the last time anything was really invested in that. And I think we, we gotta do something about Parrot Creek, and, but we can't just give it to them the way it is. And at some point, we need to fix this place up and turn it over to them, and then, then let them take care of their maintenance. Great facility, uh, always hear stories about how people have gone through here and come out, uh, valuable citizens. It's, it's a great program, and there's, there's not enough room there, really, uh, to accommodate our needs. Um, so I, I hope we can work to resolve. It was the biggest fundraiser Parrot Creek had ever had, that I've ever been to, and I've been going for years. Congratulations, uh, I was impressed. Um, and, you know, some people, uh, like Commissioner Smith mentioned, uh, there wasn't anything to bid on, but, you know, $5,000 donations. Uh, that's incredible, and John keeps track of all the money, so that's what...
Thirty-seven grand, I guess.
Yeah, that's how he counted it. Uh, anyway, that's that, and here, uh, is our dog of the week. Tom. This is Tom. He's a young Staffordshire bull terrier mix. He doesn't live in the Stafford area, though. Um, growing into a big, uh, big dog body, 48 pounds. He's looking for an active family that has time to devote love and consistent training for him. Uh, we, he can be very boisterous, boisterous, but he is learning to walk politely on a leash. Who would someone teach my dog to do that? He loves treats and learning. He's a very smart guy, and that picks up things quickly. Why not go and see him today? For more information about Tom and other adorable lock, uh, adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 Be interesting, I don't remember how long we, ago we started doing this.
About two years, I think.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to find out, um, you know, how many dogs, uh, uh, have been adopted after this.
Helps. Matter of fact, the dog from last week was adopted.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Well, great, so this is working.
It is working.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, as mentioned...
Well, as mentioned, um, by Commissioner Smith, the Regional Disaster Preparedness Organization is very interesting. They did a great presentation on, on, uh, brick, unreinforced brick or masonry, uh, buildings. If you recall what happened in San Francisco, probably several times, you know, these old buildings, especially with what they call parapets. Now, that's a flat roof, but in front of that is a wall, usually not supported by anything. And the danger, they explained, is, you know, if you're in one of those buildings, yeah, it may collapse, but you usually have a better chance in the building than going outside, because things are falling outside as well. They found in their studies that, uh, they, the city of Portland has a bunch of these as well. So they're implementing some regulations where people will, when they do a certain amount of remodeling, it'll kick in that they have to reinforce those walls. Um, the big one is coming. Nobody knows when. The, um, you know, it's been talked about by other Commissioners, um, we have the Champions for Children Lunch next week. We had the Family Justice Center, and the sheriff put on, of course, the, the Family Violence and Child Abuse Summit, which was fantastic, with Casey Gwynn there as well. And so, you know, i- it is imperative, uh, as many say, that, that, uh, we, we gotta intervene in some of these children's lives. A quote by Casey was by T.S. Eliot, "In my beginning is my end." And, uh, you know, Jim Bernard talks about it a bunch, how we, we need to get these kids when they're young. I've said before that, uh, for your own child, for you, it'd be great to take the ACE test, Adverse Childhood Experience, and then discuss that with your children now, when they're there, with you, not later on, when they may become a statistic. Um, the, uh, the fair board's next week, which is real interesting. The fair board, uh, does a great job out there. I gotta say, this board works very hard to bring an outstanding event, and we've been voted, uh, one of the most outstanding fairs in the nation, and it's an old-time, old-fashioned fair, which is very appealing, I think, to people. The, um, we have a couple of things coming up, and, um, one thing is, um, Oregon Cons, Oregon Solutions, uh, came in and talked with me, and they talked with, uh, Mayor Charlie Hales, whom I since have talked to, about the spring water trail problem. Now, the spring water trail's in multiple jurisdictions. So Oregon, Oregon Solutions thought, you know, we can't continue to treat people like yo-yos. So Clackamas County does a bust and they push them out of Clackamas County, they just go to Portland. And then they come back after Portland squeezed them out, just like they did on Monday. On that, uh, on that breakup of the camping on Monday, I will give kudos to H3S, Health, 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 Housing and Human Services, and their great work they did in trying to help those people find better residences, find food, find shelter, find medicine. They were there, you know, trying to ameliorate the concerns and problems that were generated by that. But this came about because of a lot of complaints by businesses that is drastically affecting their business. When people's, people are laying with a needle laying next to them in their doorway, it doesn't beget, uh, good business practices. So, uh, we will continue to work on that. Charlie was very, uh, enthusiastic about our participation. Also Shane Bemis, the mayor of Gresham, is in on this as well. And we look forward to resolving this and making it, uh, better for our business environment and residential environment, that area. You know, a lot has been said about the budget, and the budget is coming. Last year, we had over $4 million of, and I don't wanna call it extra, because it's tax money and it was gonna be utilized, but we chose where that money would go. This year, we have a million bucks, and it will not go very far. Actually, it's dropping, is that what you're saying? So, you know, a, a lot has been said about, "Well, we need to put more money into roads. That's where you owe us. In order to get your tru- our trust, you need to put it in the roads." Don't forget, our budget is very big. And by the way, I, I read on social media where people are saying, you know, "I don't know that my money's going towards roads." Again, I tell you, the budget is coming up. You can go online, or you can come and talk to us about where that money is going, and it's going to roads. And there's never enough. It's about $23 million. But the point of the matter is, is when you come to budgeting, what it is, is it's a time to prioritize. And so you say to yourself, with the Family Justice Center there, in need, by the way, the Children's Center, always in need. And that's where they take sexually abused children, by the way, little children.
by the way, little children sometimes, with juvenile and mental illness. And there's a cry that we need to pull general fund money out and use it on roads. Remember, there's a 100-year-old law in the state of Oregon that says, "Ad valorem or property taxes cannot be used for roadway purposes." Conversely, if I could give money to one of these entities, mental illness, juvenile, Family Justice Center, Children's Center, and not spend general fund for road, I will. Because the point of the matter is, this should be a user-pay situation. It's not dissimilar to making an application here at the county. You become a user, and you will pay. And the same thing's with roads. Eventually, if we are approved in May, we will probably come out in November with a $25 vehicle registration fee. That's one tank of gas, folks, to maintain our roads. One tank of gas, with specific measurable results in the 47 different projects throughout this county. But do know that as far as vulnerable citizens go, or roadways, when the money wasn't designated to be in roadways, I'm going to spend it on social issues, and I'm going to try to convince the Budget Committee to do the same. If I'm not successful, this board will again address that when the budget comes before us. So that being said, ladies and gentlemen, still a beautiful day out there, and there being no further business before the Commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.